Bow your head for me. Lord, thanks for the day and the opportunity to come together again. Be with us as guidance as for our thoughts and our words and our actions as we try to guide this school district. In all that we do, bring benefit to the district and be glory to you in Jesus' name. Pray amen. Return to American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Any of y'all sign up to talk? Thank you all your guests for being here, coming to watch us in action. All right. So, let's start with information items.
First thing I have on there is just a reminder about the convention that will take place October 6th through the 8th in Dallas. If anything changes as far as plans go, please let us know ASAP so we can make any cancellations that we may need to make. We'll have more on that, we'll have more information out to you also. But anyway, you can go and sign up for any of the sections you wish to. You can do that at any point now. So, anyway, again, that's October 6th through the 8th. That happens to be our open weekend football that week, so that works out.
We called in today. Did that? I tried to. And I couldn't get past the first step, so did that?
I don't know. I haven't looked at it yet, but I've tried to sign up. But the information I have is it's supposed to be.
Well, it might be that I don't know. So, back and forth again, I figured. I tried to sign up for one, I tried to sign up for class. Yeah, it didn't work.
I hadn't looked at it yet to do.
Yes. I'd like to assume then that we already are registered.
Yes, sir.
And hotels, so the only contact we would need to make is to sign up for courses or cancel if that's the case.
Right, exactly. And on the courses, you can sign up for them ahead of time, or you can just do them and kind of make plans on which ones you want to go to, or you can wait till you get there, either one.
You can just walk in if there's.
And in the years past, there may be one or two that I know I want to go to. There aren't even one I know I want to go to, and I know it's Saturday afternoon, but literally walk in on Friday morning with the book, first thing, seven in the morning, then go through, I'm gonna go this one, and this one, and this one. Here's my eight o'clock, here's my ten o'clock, here's my, you know, kind of thing.
I was gonna say, I've never signed up to anything.
I've never signed up.
They said you need to pre-register because it was limited, so.
But I've never, I've never actually pre-registered, but I have my schedule in my head, kind of what I want to do. All right. Are we registered in hotels for Thursday night?
Yes. Thursday.
Thursday. Thursday night through Saturday night.
Okay. It was your turn to talk. More red bull uniforms for the van.
I can give some pollen.
Oh, gosh. Hold on, they're not saying.
Okay.
Marshall, red.
Okay, the next thing is the Education Foundation, and that is up and running. We had another meeting, what, last week, I guess it was? And actually, we'll have our first major fundraiser, October the 14th, that all of you will be receiving more detailed information on. We presented it to our staff this morning at in-service, so it's something that will greatly benefit our teachers and our students both. So, we're really excited about it.
Was today the first time teachers heard about it?
Yeah, as far as details on how, you know, putting it all together and, you know.
Today was the announcement, though. That was the announcement today.
Yes, it was the kickoff, you know, so to speak, and everybody got information on it, and even got, you know, the donation package for it. So, it's gonna be good. We'll have competitions between the districts and that kind of thing.
Campuses.
Yeah, campuses on districts for giving, so it will be good. And again, October 14th will be something that we will kick off the fundraising activities. And again, I'm not gonna say a whole lot about it till there's more details put together by that committee.
But we've already had contributions, we've already money in.
Yes, yes, and that's a, that's a good thing.
It's moving.
So, it will be, it will be exciting. We're glad to get that off the ground and going now. Okay, that's it for the foundation accounts payable. If there's any questions, speak up. I know you all have a chance to look through all of that. And if there are no questions there, then we, I'd ask Coach Sharp to give us a quick update on our athletic program, so Coach, if you could go ahead and do that for us.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me. First of all, things are off to a really good start. It actually started at the beginning of summer. When we turned out of school, we had two, we had a basketball camp, by the way, which we had over 50 kiddos in our basketball camps, girls and guys, 50-plus, which actually was better numbers than we'd had in the past. I'd say it was quite successful. Then we had our summer programs to start. We averaged almost 25 girls a day. And in the past, we would have two to three young ladies, some of them not at all. So, that was fabulous there to average over 20 young ladies in our summer strength and conditioning program. We also averaged 55 guys, 55 kiddos. These are ages seven through nine. One day, on two separate days, we had 100-plus, including boys and girls. Those are fabulous numbers. We've never had numbers like that. So, that's a tribute to the parents and the kiddos for getting them here. We worked and we worked hard. Girls did the same, basically the same thing as the guys did, within reason, and I was so proud of those kids. So, those are numbers that compare to 4A level sometimes. Coaches have talked about that. So, really pleased with the summer work and what they put in, and a kind of an urgency, as we like to say. Volleyball is off to a great start. They're seven and one. They got third place in the Gary Tournament, which, that was an extremely competitive tournament. Even had 4A schools there. But seven and one, they played one at at Van. We had 25, we had 25 girls playing high school volleyball. JV volleyball was one and two, but they've taken all three of those matches, they've played two, three games, highly competitive. Our cross country has 40-plus kids in it, off to a great start. They compete, well, it's really kind of an opening kickoff thing, Friday night, a night run over at Spring Hill, if you will, kind of unusual, but there's like six various schools that are gonna run in the stadium there at Spring Hill to kind of kickoff the cross-country season. Football-wise, we have 67 kids playing high school football. We started that off last Monday. As we like to say, a little urgency in the house, went a whole week or six straight days as far as morning workouts. This afternoon was our first after-school workout, because of in-service. It was hot, it was humid, kids performed well, though. Extremely pleased with the effort. We had two of our kiddos, we changed everything, make no bones about it, we changed everything. And they adjusted well, adapted well, and it started back in the summer. So, I'm, I'm very, very pleased with their volleyball, cross-country, or football, and how we kicked it off. Scrimmage Friday night here, five o'clock with their JV kids, and then the varsity will follow at six o'clock, and the reverse of the troop. So, troop's gonna come over here. But off to a great start, really pleased with the kids, they're working really, really hard.
Is Friday night, there'll be 20 plays with coaches on the field, or is it gonna be?
Well, the JV will start at five. It will be a controlled scrimmage, in which we're gonna play one hour. So, as many plays as we can get with a 10-10 format of the young ones, we can get as many, they got a lot of kids too, they got close to 70 like us, so we're gonna get those young kids, as many reps, and then we'll clear the field. We'll start with the varsity at six, and we're gonna go two rounds of 10-10, and a controlled set, and then we're gonna play two live quarters. And within reason, and, you know, with their special teams. But after that, we're gonna, we're trying to make it as, as game urgency as we can, because racing and private school, they've already, you know, they've been doing this for a few weeks now. So, that second scrimmage, we found out last year that we need to make this first one almost like a game-like setting for us, and that's what we're gonna do. So, five o'clock and then six o'clock with varsity, a little control with two full quarters.
That's Friday night.
Yes, sir, that's Friday night out there.
Very good. Thank you, Coach, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right, we'll move on to consent items. Is there anything in consent items that needs to be pulled out, or can we do them as a group? Okay, can I get a motion? Approve the consent items, Paul? Get a second from Patty. Any discussion? All in favor? Ananas? All right, discussion items. Now, I showed you all where the handbooks are. If you will scroll back up to your top and arrow to the left, if you want to have any conversation about the handbooks.
Scroll to the top.
There's the link. Scroll to the top, and then there's the arrow in the top left-hand corner. You'll be along the way to the top when you start scrolling. Got it? Okay. So, there's any discussion about handbooks, there's where you can go look at them if you need to.
Okay, the principals and assistant principals are in attendance. If you have any questions about any of the campus handbooks, they certainly will be able to answer any of those questions. I think some of the, I know that some of those are marked with changes from last year, if there are any changes. A lot of times, if there's a change in student code of conduct that's sent down from the state level, then we'll change, we'll make those mandatory changes. But sometimes there are no changes if there are no changes in the student code of conduct from the state. Yes, sir?
My question, I actually have a couple of questions. I'll start with elementary, along that line, the other two campus books or student manuals had highlighted yellow areas. I noticed the elementary did not. Did you simply start from scratch and do that, or is this, or there were no changes?
No, there was some, there was some additions, yes, and I didn't have a lot.
That's okay, I just wondered. And then moving up to middle school, can I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Moving up to the middle school, I noticed a lot of areas that I thought, this is high school stuff, what's it doing in the middle school?
Well, we went in this year, had some CTE and some kind of plan pathways that the kids would be deciding when they get to high school, because we have some kids that are taking high school credits later.
Okay, so it actually applies. See, I.
So, we are, I think, five high school credits that we get as eighth graders, and so they start making those, students are at least standing to talk to about that.
So, they should know about it, yeah.
Yes, yes, sir.
And my last question.
I was still five, they have to come into high school, no wonder what a major in, too.
Yeah.
And my last question is for the high school one, and gosh, I almost hate to ask, but with the legislature still meeting, but apparently the transgender bill is dead from what I've read. What is the Sabine policy on bathrooms? And I'm assuming it would mostly apply to high school, although it probably could apply district-wide. Is it, or is there a?
Well, our, you know, what, what we've done in the past, and that is, our policy is.
Boys, boys, those are us.
Yes, and, you know, we've gone through some discussions with our attorneys regarding our situation here, if we have a student that, that is transgender, falls into that category, and what we do, what is allowed, what's not allowed, and the way we have done it in the past, at this point with law, fits exactly the way it should be followed. At this point, high school's not had to deal with that. At this point, middle school's not had to deal with that. Can't say the same with elementary, but what we've done with, with the attorney consulting us, we made those plans at that elementary school, has followed it now for three years, and it's worked well.
Okay, and then some of the other, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, you know, something like that happens, and we're directly, they really have a perfect setup, because we have, we have bathrooms in the office, we also have one in the nurse's office, that both gender shoes, so we have to cover.
And then a lot, a lot of the other changes were probably directly related to David's law with the bullying and all that, but.
Yeah, going back to what Coach Shaw was saying, too, you know, let's just say that need is, is at the middle school or at the high school also, they will follow exactly what we have put in place at the, at the elementary school. Each campus will follow the same procedure.
Anybody else have any questions? Or handbooks? Certified property values.
Great news, please. Okay, yeah, and that's just something I wanted to, to go over with you, so. Did y'all are asked?
Just hit the area stack at the bottom, and then go back down to the bottom of our picture page, and click Word Package. Sorry.
No, you're good. You know, I sent, I sent all of you email regarding our certified values that came in, so I just kind of wanted to discuss that with you a little bit, to let you know what that impact is to the district. And so, when you're asked questions out in the community, you, you will be able to answer those questions. Our estimated values are what we use to build the budget, and at that point, on April the 27th, is when we got those from the Greck County Appraisal District. Those are always very conservative, which is good for us in building budget. So, then when the certified values come in in July, those values are generally, well, they're always more, which benefits us also. Well, this year, for some reason, we still can't put a finger on why the appraisal district had it that way, but for some reason, the values declined $15 million instead of the number that they gave us in April. And I'm saying 15 million less than their estimated value. So, the certifies came in to 15 million less. So, that's not a good thing for the district, that's not a good thing for a city or anything like that. What that does for us, when you put it in the budget, dollars, how it comes out to us in dollars, is it actually means we have, we will be getting $211,000 less than what we thought we would be getting. So, in a, you know, $10 million budget, that doesn't seem like a lot, but it is a lot, and it can be a lot. So, you know, it's not a situation where we're in panic mode by any means, but it is a situation where I've met with the administrators and the teachers today regarding tightening the bill, you know, because it's time to do that. We're not in a situation where we're going to cut budget because the budget's already been approved. So, we're in a situation now where it is focusing on spending less. If, if there are things out there that we actually do not need drastically, then we will not purchase those items. It's not a situation where we're going to count half the number of pieces of paper that a teacher can have for the week, you know, that kind of thing.
Do you get a ring of mine?
Yeah, you know, and today, when I talk to teachers, and there, there are several teachers that are in our district, that they've taught in other districts to where they do that, oh, you are, I have two rings of paper this semester, and that's all you get, you know, that's, that's just not good. We're not at that point, but we are going to do everything we can to cut spending. We're looking at 5% across the board on spending. You know, we started that, we started with copying, you know, that, that's one thing that I went over our expenses over the last four years on, on copies and copy machines, and we're gonna cut that expense because we can, I know we can. Substitute, hiring substitute teachers in a classroom, that's gonna be another thing we're gonna stress a lot more, is, you know, teachers need to be more, number one, we want our attendance rate up for teachers, and we don't want to have to hire substitute teachers. If we have an aide that is gonna have to be out, we may not get us up for that aide that day if we can, you know, we're gonna do everything we can as long as it doesn't negatively impact the kids, and that's what we're gonna do. And I feel like we can do that. $211,000 is a lot to make up, but the way I look at it, the, the more we can save on spending, the less at the end of the year, we're gonna have to take out of the fund balance. And that's, that's our goal, is not to try to have to get into that fund balance at the end of the year because of this. So, there are, you know, travel, we've talked about travel, is another means that we're going to cut into, where we're gonna do some, do less spending. Teachers are very on board with it, they know what we're looking at, they know it's a team effort, because it can't happen in just one department or one campus, it's got to be with everybody. So, that's kind of the message that we sent out. Like I said, we had administrators meeting on that last week, also met with elementary students today on that, their staff, met with the high school staff today at our morning session, and I'll meet with the middle school on that too. So, that's where we are. You know, the answer that I got from the appraisal district was basically, two, two of our larger taxpayers companies basically went down in value, and oilfield equipment was a major factor in that. I still don't see how it goes from 15 billion from April 27th to July 24th, but, you know, I know a lot of that is guessing too on their part, and they, and they don't get accurate information all the time. But anyway, any questions about that? I just wanted y'all to be able to talk about that in the community, if you're asked about it. So, I want y'all to, to know where we are and why it is that way.
Just the conversation that I had with Stacy, and I don't know, Patty may have been on the board, but I was here, more chatting with Patty, and one of our, just a couple of years ago, we had to cut 10% out of our budget, two years in a row. Of course, Ms. Bass and Coach Shaw were both in their same positions at the time, so we were able to cut back 10%, two years in a row, and now we're talking about something that's 2.5%. And, yes, it's gonna hurt, but they know how, and so we're just gonna tighten up.
Has this ever happened before in your tenure?
No.
Never happened.
We have a whole new group.
Yeah, the people in charge are different people now, over here.
At the appraisal. Brand-new appraisal.
We've never had the certified come out less than the best.
It's always, we usually would gain a hundred thousand.
Yeah, in all the years I've been doing it, it's always been a higher number, it's never been less.
Yeah, so, I don't know. It's fine, so, it's, you know, we were surprised, because it's never happened that way. You know, Kilgore took a hit also, they took a bigger hit than we did, the city of Kilgore took a big hit.
Everybody's in the same boat. Everybody thought they had a number coming, and then they got cut by some percentage of dollars. Yes, sir?
Well, just, and so there's, because they're certified values, there's no.
Next year, with the money we can get from the state, because what happens, the, the whole law will says, you get this much money from the state based on the amount of taxes that you receive. Well, we're getting money from the state based on the taxes that we received last year, so next year, we'll give you the money from the state because we received less than taxes.
For the year back.
Yes, right. But we have to wait a year to get it. So, yes, next year.
So, this year, what we can do to help out is cut our spending. So, other than that, there's not much we can do this year, but next year, we should get some more state funding.
All right, everybody give a that, or a mixed good you can pay. Next item of action, item 8A, approve bid for high school roofing project.
Okay, yeah, as you can see in your, in your memo, the budget was passed with the high school roof repair in it, and it was approved, the bids came in, and the low bid is what we went with. Basically, what we need to do at this point, you've already approved the budget and all of that in it, we just need you to, I'm sorry, we need you to approve, basically, the bid that is awarded to advanced roofing, because that's in our policy, anything over 50,000 will be approved by the board.
Okay, so we get.
It'd be my recommendation to approve the bid from advanced roofing.
Okay, can I get a? Danny, get a second. Paul, any discussion? All in favor? Ananas? All right, next item of delegates.
Okay, each year, we do this, as far as prior to the convention, we will nominate a delegate and an alternate for the convention, and at this point, it's open.
Be voluntary?
No. I nominated, so Tommy loves that, Tommy loves it.
Nominate Tommy, I'm gonna make Tommy, Tommy loves it.
Okay. Oh, I'm not gonna do this, you do this, Tommy.
Yeah, so, put Audrey down as a secondary, give her something to do on that day.
Okay.
I'm gonna be there, I'm gonna have to.
So, we have nominations. We have any other nominations?
Anybody else?
So.
Tony, you're it.
I'm it. Audrey's our secondary. All in favor?
She's the alternate?
No. Yeah, she's alternate.
Secretary.
All in favor? All right. Appraisers, oh, yeah, I made a first, you made a second, all in favor? I don't even know what these are. Appraisers and appraiser calendar.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the appraisal calendar, along with the appraisers. We do this each year, this is an annual thing that is done, and basically, number one, the, the page of teacher appraisers is listed, that's the assistant principal and principal on each campus, also Ms. Yates, and then Ms. Thornton, our special ed director, is on there too. And that has not changed with people in those roles doing that as previously. And then again, our appraisal calendar, we develop the calendar according to policy, because the policy will dictate on what days those appraisals can begin, and, and certainly takes into consideration holidays and so forth throughout the year. So, the appraisal calendar and the teacher appraisers are presented, it would be my recommendation to approve the 2017-18 appraisal calendar and teacher appraisal.
You get a motion? Paul, get a second. Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Ananas, tax rate.
Okay, Mr. Nagel, talk to us about the tax rate.
Well, the, as we discussed in the budget hearings, back in May and June, our MNO tax rate, without going to the voters, is speculatively set at $1.04. Our INS rate, that we've had for the last, even three or four years, is just over 26 cents per $100 evaluation. You can see in the cover letter this year, the proposed tax rates will result in a levy of $5,170,000. a levy of, uh, five million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, whereas last year, our levy was five million, four hundred and fourteen thousand. So unfortunately, we won't be, we won't have to put the blur in the, uh, resolution or on our website, tax rate this year will raise more revenue than it last.
We don't have to put that? Oh, because it's raising less revenue this time?
It's unfortunate.
Yes, yeah. That raised all kind of confusion less.
I would much rather have it that way, but unfortunately.
Okay.
But, uh, that's basically the, the dollar four, unless we go to the taxpayers, with the tax rate protection election, that's what it'll be every year, the INS rate, um, we've, uh, after discussion with the board, I've just left it at that rate, to begin building up a little fund balance, and, um, and a debt service fund to help us with our annual, uh, debt balance.
Okay, make a recommendation?
Recommendation, I believe that there's one that I gave, uh, I gave to, um, Stacy that, uh, that's not how the motion's supposed to actually be.
Recommend that the board approve the attached ordinance, setting tax rate at a dollar four for minimum and point two six one four three for INS. Make a motion? Call, Dr. Moore Chat second, any discussion? All in favor? unanimous? Alright, and that brings us to closed session at seven.
I was going to say, you realize some people are about fifty-five, it's not seven.
Yeah.
Seven oh seven.
Summer, a dollar sixty-seven, it's down there.
Thank y'all for coming.